All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're calling our Township Zoning Commission meeting of Tuesday, September the 6th. Heather, could you call to order? Roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Linganfelter?
Here.
Mr. Repert?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Ifelis?
Here. On our agenda this evening is a public hearing that we're going to convene here. The first item on our agenda. So to begin, to begin, I'm convening this public hearing for the consideration of a MAP Amendment and text amendments initiated by the zoning commission and published in our agenda for this evening. Per the revised code, the Township Zoning Commission is required to hold a public hearing for any proposed amendments to the Concord's zoning resolution. In this instance, the zoning commission is proposing amendments after a couple of meetings, discussions, and deliberation. So this evening, we have 11 amendments to offer for public comment. They are all interrelated to a singular initiative to rezone a parcel on Concord-Hamden Road. One order of business that we've taken care of is to submit the proposed amendments to the Lake County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did reply in writing, and that I am now required to read into the record for this public hearing. The date of the letter from the Lake County Planning and Community Development Department is August 31st, 2022, addressed to Ms. Heather Freeman, our zoning inspector. It's regarding the THN District Amendments and Text Amendments. Dear Ms. Freeman, the Lake County Planning Commission took under consideration the above-mentioned district change and text amendment changes for Section 6, 11, 13, 14, 22, 30, 34, 37, and 38 at their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, August 30th, 2022. The Lake County Planning Commission recommended that you make the district and text amendments. We are available to help with any aspect of this recommendation. If you have any questions, please feel free to call David Redachi, Director. Yours truly, David Redachi, Director, and he carbon copied the Concord Township Board For purposes of the amendments, I'm going to introduce them in the public hearing. There are, as I said, 11 separate amendments. One is a MAP Amendment, followed by 10 separate text amendments, all interrelated to rezoning of a parcel on Concord-Hamden Road. Procedurally, counsel, I believe I have to read each amendment into the record before proceeding.
That's correct, yes.
So, beginning with Amendment Number 1, zoning MAP Amendment to rezone current permanent parcel number 08-A-014-0-00-012-0, which is located on the north side of Concord-Hamden Road between Auburn Road and Ravenna Road, from the current zoning district of THN Town Hall Neighborhood to R1 Residential District. And accompanying that amendment is published a revised Concord Township zoning map that identifies the parcel in question and the rezoning to R1. Amendment Number 2 reads as follows: "Modify Section 6 General Requirements to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." And a copy of that Section 6 has been provided to the board here this evening. Amendment Number 3, "Modify Section 11.02 Site Plan Review Required Prior to Issuance of a Zoning Permit to Delete the Reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." Amendment Number 4, "Modify Conditional Use Permit Sections 13.07, 13.08, 13.18, 13.20, 13.24, and 13.33 to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." Amendment Number 5, "Modify Section 14 Use Districts to delete the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." I hope I'm not taking liberties, it's Roman numeral 14-XIV, so. Amendment Number 6, "Modify Section XXII-22 Commercial and Industrial District Regulations to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." Amendment Number 7, "Modify Section 30.05 Permanent Signs in Commercial, Manufacturing, and Research Districts to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." Amendment Number 8, "Modify Fences Section 34.01 Applicability to Delete Reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." Amendment Number 9, "Modify Section 36.02 Site Plan Review Required to Delete Reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." Amendment Number 10, "Modify Design Standards Section 37.03 Requirement to Delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District." Amendment Number 11.
Oh, here's a good one.
"Modify Section 38 Landscape and Screening Requirements to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Bravo.
Got through it.
Mr. Chairman, if I can note.
Please.
The letter from the Lake County Planning and Community Development that you read, they missed, in their listing of sections, they missed 36, which is our amendment Number 9.
Nice catch there.
Nice, yes.
Very nice catch.
You are correct, I find that's correct.
And I would assume that since they recommended we adopt all of the other amendments or the sections, that they just probably, there was a typographical error.
I fully assumed that also.
Yeah, inadvertent omission, so. I don't think there was any intent behind that.
No, I don't think so.
I'll have to agree with that as well. Any objection to that, Frank?
Well, I also would like to make note, Mr. Chairman, that the Lake County Planning and Community Development Group is, they're strictly a recommending body. We are not obligated under any rules or regulations to follow their recommendations. Whether we adopt them or not is really up to us. They're just a recommending body, and we have the liberty and the freedom to decide whether or not we want to bring their recommendations into our decision-making process anyway. So I think that's important to note as well.
Great. Thank you, Andy, thank you. So at this point, having read the amendments into the record and the recommendation from the Lake County Planning Commission, this is open for public comment from anyone from the public to come forward and speak to the proposed amendments.
Mr. Chairman, before we start that component, the public's, are we going to basically decide on each amendment individually and vote on each amendment individually? Have a motion made to accept Amendment Number 1, and then a vote, and then so on and so forth? And on the public hearing, are we going to have a public section for each individual amendment? Or are we going to have a public hearing that is going to be public comment on amendments 1 through 11?
Thanks for the question.
Just as a clarification.
I may not have explained. So what I, the reason I read all 11 was to open up all of them for public comment.
Okay.
As far as approvals, we will adopt them individually.
Okay. Just was, I'm trying to understand procedurally how we were going to approach this.
Yes.
Because I know sometimes it gets sticky.
Sticky.
So.
Sorry. So, having read all 11 amendments into the record, all of them are subject to public comment at this time. Anyone wishes to comment, please come forward. Nobody's on the phone?
Do we have, just to see, do we have anybody in the room?
No.
Okay.
So at this time, I will formally close the public hearing, and then open it up for discussion amongst us on board for the 11 amendments. We could discuss them individually, we're going to discuss them individually or take them for consideration individually, but collectively, since we spent some time on this and it's all interrelated.
Some time.
Do we have?
We've spent a lot of time.
Do we have any point of discussion on any of them in terms of discussion, since they're all interrelated?
Not for me, Mr. Chairman. Not here, Mr. Chairman?
No, my thought process is that we've already spent quite a bit of time deliberating this. I think we've, Heather's done a phenomenal job in getting us the information that we asked for. We've gone through it. These amendments are all interrelated, and I think really the vast majority of them are just housekeeping, deleting the reference to the Town Hall Neighborhood District. So I would think that it would be prudent to just go ahead and just go down the list and accept the motion, and second, and vote on the amendments as they are listed. I didn't see anything in any of the amendments as they were made that would cause concern for modifications or any changes in the, for the record.
Thank you, Andy.
So I would think it would be just a good idea to just move through them.
Thank you. Before I do, Heather, any further comment on any of the amendments that we have before us?
Nothing new.
Nothing, very good. We're going to consider each amendment. And each amendment we will consider through roll call, vote. So before us then, Amendment Number 1, for consideration, zoning MAP Amendment to rezone current permanent parcel number 08-A-014-0-00-012-0, which is located on the north side of Concord-Hamden Road between Auburn Road and Ravenna Road, from the current zoning district of THN Town Hall Neighborhood to R1 Residential District.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Amendment Number 1, as stated just now by you, into the zoning text.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Heather?
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes. Thank you. Members, Amendment Number 2, "Modify Section 6 General Requirements to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Amendment Number 2, which is "Modify Section 6 General Requirements to delete all reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, Heather.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes. Thank you. Members, Amendment Number 3, "Modify Section 11.02 Site Plan Review Required Prior to Issuance of a Zoning Permit to Delete the Reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood
Mr. Chairman, I so moved that we modify Section 11.02 Site Plan Review Required Prior to Ensurance of the Zoning Permit to delete the reference to the THN Township Hall Neighborhood District.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, Heather?
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes. Thank you. Amendment Number 4, "Modify Conditional Use Permit Sections 13.07, 13.08, 13.18, 13.20, 13.24, and 13.33 to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Amendment Number 4 and modify Conditional Use Permit Sections 13.7, 08, 18, 20, 24, and 33 to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, roll call?
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes, thank you. Amendment Number 5, "Modify Section 14 Use Districts to Delete the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve to modify Section 14 Use Districts to delete the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Being none, roll call, Heather?
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes, thank you. Amendment Number 6, "Modify Section 22 Commercial and Industrial District Regulations to Delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we modify Section 22 Commercial and Industrial District Regulations to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, Heather, roll call?
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
And Mr. Ifelis?
Yes, thank you. Amendment Number 7, "Modify Section 30.05 Permanent Signs in Commercial, Manufacturing, and Research Districts to Delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Amendment Number 7, which is to modify Section 30.05 Permanent Signs in Commercial, Manufacturing, and Research Districts to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Heather, roll call, please.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes, thank you. Amendment Number 8, "Modify Fences Section 34.01 Applicability to Delete Reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Amendment Number 8 to modify fences Section 34.01 applicability to delete reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Amendment Number 8. Any further discussion? Being none, Heather, roll call?
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes, thank you. Amendment Number 9, "Modify Section 36.02 Site Plan Review Required to Delete Reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Amendment Number 9, which is to modify Section 36.02 Site Plan Review Required to delete reference to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood I second it, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, Heather?
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes, thank you. Amendment Number 10, "Modify Design Standards Section 37.03 Requirement to Delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Amendment Number 10, "Modify Design Standards Section 37.03 Requirement to Delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, Heather, roll call, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes, thank you. Amendment Number 11, "Modify Section 38 Landscape and Screening Requirements to Delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District."
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Amendment Number 11, which is to modify Section 38 Landscape and Screening Requirements to delete all references to the THN Town Hall Neighborhood District.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, Heather, roll call, please.
Mr. Repert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes.
Mr. Ifelis?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. We have forwarded, we will forward now our recommendations to the Board of Trustees for their consideration, now that we have approved the proposed amendments. Thank you for the work, thank you for your help with this all, Heather, thank you colleagues for all the work towards this. We have now stricken Town Hall Neighborhood from our English language.
So it is said, so it shall be done.
Rest in peace.
Yeah, 11 places. All right. Thank you again. Moving on to our agenda, the next order of business is the approval of our minutes from August 2nd, 2022 meeting.
I'll leave that up to the heavy.
I was going to say, you must have let me go through it.
I am waiting.
I'm waiting too.
What'd you find this time? Come on, Hyrum, don't let us down.
Don't let us down.
Did you really?
Yeah. Page 2, line 6. Page 2. Ms. Freeman said, "Yes, I will, Mr. Peterson." And it was response to you to call the roll, Mr. Ifelis.
See that?
Yeah.
Sounded good the first time I went through it, but the second time, I said, "Ah, no, that's wrong." Okay.
Very good.
Page 3, line 14. Should be, so I think maybe we can discuss. There should be a space between can and discuss.
Agreed.
Picky, 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 but so be it. Page 14, line 21. Chairman Linganfelter.
Oh, man, they keep putting me in that role, whether I want it or not.
Okay, that should be I, Felice, of course, we know that. Page 18, line 30. Now, this is a question I had. It says, "Chairman I, Felice, said second. All in favor? Three I votes, no nay votes." Where do we get three? Shouldn't it be five?
Wait a minute, help me out again, Hyrum, where are we at? What section?
Line, it's really line 29 and 30 on page 18.
Page 18, 29 and 30?
Yes.
23, I entertain a motion to hold the public hearing, which we just.
Do we have a second? Mr. Schindler said second. Second, all in favor.
Three, yeah, well, that's a mistake.
It should be five, shouldn't it?
Well, I don't know, did five people say aye?
Well, we had no nay votes.
Doesn't matter. How many people said aye? If only three people said aye, that's a majority. That's enough to carry it through, but I mean.
But what happened to the other two?
They may not have said anything. They may have just either abstained, or thought they would have abstained, they would have said abstained, but if they didn't respond.
Richard wasn't here, right? Sorry.
No, everybody was here.
Everybody was here.
No, we had a full board.
Everybody was here.
It's a good point, that's a valid point.
Valid point.
I just questioned whether we should have five or three. You're right, it doesn't make a difference.
No, I mean, it just may have been three people said aye, and no.
I don't know if this is a legal question, would three of them validate the motion?
Sure, no, three, three, it's a majority.
Majority, yeah. Out of five.
Yeah. Technicality, but.
Yeah, okay. Page 39, line 11.
Wait a minute, 39?
Page 39, line 11, and again, we need a space between nothing and happiness.
Where's that, line 11?
It's on line 11.
Yeah, okay. Duly noted.
Okay. And then, I have a question. Not a revision, or correction, or whatever. We said on page 50, no, I think Heather said on page 50, Heather said on page 50.
Which line?
Line, starting at line 6. And I will just make sure that we also state elsewhere that we require legal counsel to review the deed restrictions. Boy, I don't, do we have anything to say about deed restrictions?
Yes, for the, that was in reference regarding our discussion with the planning of developments and residential conservation district development. Yes, we always have our counsel review those deed restrictions prior to the developer recording them. There's a, they check them for, if, whether or not, you know, specifically in an RCD, if we're requiring restrictions on the open space, we're looking for that language in there, plus there's other legal things that our attorney is checking to make sure we're protected. Yeah.
Good question.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Hyrum. Any other corrections, additions, deletions, to propose?
I can't top that.
No.
I'm sorry. He always sets the bar way too high for me.
Thank you for, beyond my. Thank you for that.
I know, Mindy just, she's chewing, she's chewing through nails as this goes on, you know that.
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended and corrected.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the minutes as amended by Mr. Repert. I think all of his findings were accurate and correct, and I would say we should enter that into the record and accept the motion, or accept the minutes as amended by Mr. Repert.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor approving the minutes by motion of aye, please?
Aye. I think that was four ayes. I think that was, I think everybody said aye, so that's four.
The minutes stand approved, thank you.
Now, Hyrum will be looking for that line in the minutes to make sure that there were four ayes, I promise you.
But there were only four members. But I think we all ought to have different octaves for our ayes, so we know there's three, four, or five.
I definitely know my voice, for sure.
Our next order of business is correspondence. Any correspondence members have to report this evening? Frank?
I haven't had correspondence per se, but I've had a lot of neighbors and people in the township that stop me about the development, of course, on who's, saying, you know, that was supposed to be a conservation development, how come all the trees were all taken down? And I, of course, couldn't come up with a specific answer that would justify, you know, why that had happened like that, and they were very displeased and really surprised that we allowed that to happen. I said, "Well, zoning commission has so much we can do, of course." The final say-so goes from us after that to the trustees, and they normally handle things after that accordingly, based on being elected officials. But I've had a lot of questions about that, and I don't know what else to say, you know?
If we want to comment, I don't, maybe ask Heather to comment. My recollection was the conservation area were primarily wetlands, there were no trees. In the wetlands areas, there were, that's just over there outside. That's my recollection. The open space.
What was your recollection about the open space? I'm sorry.
It's wetlands. There are wetlands areas that there really weren't trees, per se.
Right.
If you were to look at the area that was fenced all along going down this road, there was a lot why were trees all along that whole area, and quite some areas where the other home used to be was quite heavily treated also. And that's, I just got the impression that's what they were wondering, why it was just clear cut all over now, so.
Is that fault of the county to inspect and?
Well, so, not all, not all the trees were cut.
Right.
I mean, several more than, you know, what I think everyone thought was going to be cut. And then there was a change in where they were bringing the sewer in, because they originally had stated that the large trees up. And then there was a change in where they were bringing the sewer in because they originally had stated that the large trees up by Hoos Road, right behind the fence, that those were not going to be disturbed. But somehow then they were going to bring the sewer from Button and come across Hoos rather than coming, I think, from Canterwood. And then the next thing you know, they cut all the trees down over there, but there are, there are wetlands there that are protected that don't necessarily have trees that are part of the open space as well. There will be significant replantings of trees. And the other thing is to remember that the trustees did decide that their stormwater basins were going to count as part of their minimum thirty percent open space. And I think that to an effect then allowed them to clear more of that open space in order to put that stormwater infrastructure in there.
So the trustees allowed the stormwater basins to be part of their open-
There was significant discussion during the public hearings about whether or not it was going to be included or not. The developer had provided some statistics to the trustees at that time indicating that whether or not they counted the stormwater basins or not, they were still over the thirty percent. If I recall, I think without counting the stormwater basins, they were like right at thirty, and if we did include them, they were at thirty-six percent. So after much discussion and debate, it was agreed upon that they would, that either way that they were going to meet the thirty percent, therefore allowing them to, to get that, that density that they were originally approved for.
Could, could I get-
But with the new text that we have in place, we've definitely closed the loophole on that, the ambiguity and the vagueness of that is not there anymore, so.
Could I get a plan of Canterwood? That's approved or whatever it may be?
We can, yeah, I can, I can email you probably the Dropbox to the final approved urban plans from the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, just as a, just as a matter of record, I think, you know, when somebody says, you know, conservation development and cutting down the trees, my comment would be, you know, conservation development has nothing to do with saving trees. Conservation development is open space regardless of what happens with the trees. That's what, that's how I would approach that to any resident that voices concern. Conservation development doesn't mean that they're going to not cut the trees down. Trees have to be removed for whatever reason, whether it's access, whether it's easements, whether it's homesites, whatever, trees are going to go down. And as, as far as the number of trees that go down, it's inconsequential. The fact of the matter is thirty percent or more of that development is open space. And that's what, that's what we're striving for, whether it's, and then whether they come back in and plant new trees or whether they, I mean, the quality of the trees that are removed, nobody's, I don't think there's, you know, people don't, they're not arborists, that they're not people that understand, you know, forestry. So maybe the trees that were removed were either diseased or basically no, no good. And they're going to be replaced with quality, you know, with quality hardwoods or quality trees, you know, once, once the development is, you know, kind of platted out and start, that's the construction is started, so. You know, when somebody says, oh, you're cutting all the trees down, it's like, conservation development doesn't really have anything to do with not cutting down trees, you know? I think that's a safe way to present that to a resident, because that's true. I mean, it really, you know, you don't know, you don't know the reasons behind what happens when, when trees are removed, because there's a myriad of things that go on, you know, with that process, so.
I think it's basically handy, the perception.
Right.
You know?
Understood.
Because people who drove and drive by there every day, all the years they've lived here, and all of a sudden just see everything gone, that's, that's the thing, you know? So, yeah, you're right, there's a multitude of reasons why, so. I'm just saying, I've been hit with these questions. Because, you know, I'm part of the zoning board, so I get hit with it a lot.
And I think it's important that the residents understand that conservation, a conservation development is about open space. That's the key, is open space. It's not about the trees or the woodlands or the, the different things that are going on there. I think it's important that they understand that it's really about, it's really about open space. And if they've got, you know, if they fulfill those requirements and, you know, if there's thirty percent of that development that's dedicated to open space, that's what's important. Thirty percent of that is going to be no houses, no, and doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be not be disturbed, but it's going to be, you know, thirty percent of those, you know, that, that kind of a situation, so.
Well, I had, one lady asked me in the store, oh, there's a lot of fish in that pond. Can we help take the fish out of there before they moved upon, moved upon? I said, well, I don't know about that. That's the case. Maybe I just want to talk to Mr. Rebe about that, because I don't have any answer.
There's gonna be fish in there for that.
I guess that's what I mean.
I haven't dreamed it yet.
No.
You have anything else, Frank?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing from me.
And nothing from me other than yucky act around community days? And how well I played. So, public participation is our next order of business. Is open for the public? Any, any? Anybody coming forward to speak? Who's come to the podium? And of course, no one's on the phone. Thank you. Any new business to come before this board?
Not on tonight's agenda.
Not tonight's agenda. Thank you. We're going to move on to the old business. As noted in our agenda this evening, the continuation of our work session to review Section sixteen, PUD, and RCD district has been tabled pending further advice counsel from counsel. Counsel from counsel on the proposed changes we had in there. So we have a work session to review the capital district table of uses, so. First of all, Heather, thank you for pulling that together. Before we embark on that particular item, I did want to kind of ask a couple clarifying questions. Related to this, again, thank you for bringing this forward. The, the board has been having some discussion related to the uses, the conditional uses, permitted uses within the capital district. What Heather's provided us with is no emergency.
No.
Was two, two sections from our zoning resolution, thirteen conditional use permits and, and twenty-two, the commercial industrial district regulations. And then in addition to that, provided us with recommendations from the Risinger report from 2016 as it relates to the Concord Town Center. My, my question, and I mean, it's for everyone, but particularly Heather, in, in consideration of this, in, in in going through a work session in a logical, methodical manner, it, it seems to me that the commercial industrial, the twenty-two should be considered first before we talk about conditional uses. The regulations that govern the capital district before we talk about the conditional uses, is, is that? Is that makes some sense? Because in the, the Risinger report, I see, I see four different categories. The board has seen what was attached, four different categories. The first, related to Town Center, was innovative site plan development recommendations in three point two, it's all three point two from the report. Then there's a second one citing definitions. Then there's a third one on conditional use permits. And then there's a fourth area on the commercial and industrial district regulations. In developing a program to go through this work session, so it's not overwhelming for all of us, just trying to think of a, of a logical way to consider this in a, in a step by step so that we're not overstepping ourselves and going back and going forward and coming back. I don't know if that makes sense, Heather, to you or to anybody on the board when I'm, when I'm kind of asking?
I think so, yeah. And I might have given you too many pages, actually, from the report, because I started printing them out, and I'm like, well, yeah, this kind of gets into more than what we discussed that we were going to talk about.
Yes.
It's, you know, like you said, it's looking at the uses first, and then what are the parameters around those uses? Should the board decide that they want to make that a second or third step in the process, we, we can. But I think what we talked about the last meeting was just really focusing on the uses themselves.
Yes.
So I apologize if this-
No, no, that's okay.
This, like you mentioned, this came out of a much larger report, and at the time, they were, they did a comprehensive review of our regulations at the time that we had in place. When we were, when the township was being more aggressive as far as trying to move forward with this whole concept, and we had an RFP and an RFQ out there. So we were working with the trustees on trying to do a pretty comprehensive update, actually, to the innovative site plan development. That didn't end up moving through all the required public hearings, you know, with the trustees. We ended up withdrawing that and kind of tabling those amendments. The timing just was not right.
Okay.
So I think rather than trying to look at everything again and how can we change it all, like, like you said, let's go back and look at what are the uses under the capital district?
Yes.
And I think this document kind of gave us some ideas on ones that they suggested that we get rid of, which kind of backed up what I was suggesting to you. Plus, whatever thoughts this board has. And I think we've learned that if somebody has property that's zone capital, you know, they can really go under either option. They can develop just under the capital district, or if they have the four acres and they want to do something more dance, more creative and mixed use, then they have that option to go with the, with the ISPD, which is another type of plan development. Rather than going in front of the zoning commission and the trustees for approval for a rezone and then the plan development, the resolution sets this up as a conditionally permitted use. So if you own four acres of property in the capital district, you basically apply for a conditional use permit to get approved to do the innovative site plan development. And those are the standards in section thirteen.
So while not eleven amendments that inter, that interrelate for the THN, we have two that are interrelate here, based on that four acre, the ISPD.
Yeah.
The option to go ISPD as a conditional use
Right.
in the capital district. Okay, okay. So I, I believe it, it would make sense for us to, to just address the table of uses as you had indicated in the agenda.
And then, and then even like the next step, if we needed to, is then to scrutinize the specific conditions under those specific conditional uses. So if we need to take a look at them to see if we need to make revisions as far as what are the specific conditions under those uses too, I mean, that's something that we could continue on, yeah, the next, yeah, right.
Okay, that's kind of what I was asking. What, what make a logical order? The consideration of, in, in general broadly, the uses within this district, permitted, conditional, and then, and then move on into, into the weeds and details there. If we look at the table of uses in
If we can go back, the innovative site PD. Is that related to the overlay that we had approved that's still on the books for the, the-
It wasn't-
Town Center?
It's not necessarily, it's not really an overlay. The way the township adopted it is it's set up as a conditional use. Only in the capital district.
Okay.
So just, just like any other conditional use, if you, if you own property, in this case, it has to be in the capital district. So if you look at the zoning map and you look at what property is zone capital, they can develop under one of those permitted or conditionally permitted uses, of which one of those is the innovative, innovative site plan development.
Okay. So that, it's, it's an interesting novel and unique in my understanding. I've never seen anything like this in a zoning.
I think at the time, the township was thinking that it would be more, be quicker to move through the process because they were trying to encourage it and make the approval process less cumbersome and therefore not requiring the applicant to have to go through a rezone, which is, takes a lot of time, several months to go to, to rezone, which is why they put that in as a conditional use. But we were, we were talking about changing that even a couple of years ago, back in 2017. We had some draft amendments that was actually going to take that out from not being
Conditional.
A conditional use.
And what would it be then? An overlay?
I think we were going down the overlay route, honestly.
The more traditional.
But then it would go, it would still go zone, I think the way it was set up was then the review would be with the zoning commission and the trustees with the final say.
Okay.
That's the next, third level. Yeah, or whatever, yeah, whatever.
Okay, so without objection, if it's okay with the board, under, what's been provided to us under the regulations, section twenty-two, twenty-two point oh-three is a table of uses for the capital, in speaking directly to the capital district. Could I look to you, Heather, to kind of walk us through?
No.
That table for the cap, I mean, in terms of what we want to consider as an initial first step to consider, discuss the various uses that are permitted in the capital and maybe those that aren't that we want to consider? Even though there's recommendations from the Risinger report, we should be thoughtful about anything else we may want to consider or not consider?
Right.
Okay.
Well, the only, so the, the capital district is, you'll note that the table of uses is kind of split up into various categories, so the first section is your office and professional services. This capital district does permit all of these uses. It allows for a lot of permitted uses and then conditionally permitted uses. Most recently, there was debate about car washes and gas stations and coupled with what even the Risinger report was saying, I was recommending that the zoning commission take those uses out from the capital district because we're not really looking to do auto oriented type uses within the capital district. I think the preference would really be for someone to look at that property and choose the innovative site plan development as the most desirable option. And I, I think that's also a recommendation under thirteen thirty-six to take those uses out if they're not already out, but other than that, I, I mean, there's a lot of, the, the capital district allows quite a bit. So I, I wasn't really sure if there was anything new that, that we really needed to add at this point. And I, I know that there'll be some changes at the state level, and I don't, I think it might be a little too early right now. Maybe council knows, but are we, like, regarding fireworks sales, retail sales? Is that something that, right now, when we list retail, we, we have a very general, broad definition of what, what retail is, which would include pretty much the retail sale of any kind of good within an enclosed building? So should the community not want to permit fireworks sales? Because I do know, starting in January of twenty-three, they are going to allow more retail establishments to set up in communities, more license will be available. And I don't know if we're still waiting on the state to allow, to tell municipalities or townships specifically if we have the authority to regulate those or not, similar to like when we were talking about the medical marijuana dispensaries. But that might be something, it might be a little bit too early right now, but.
But we have microbrewery and micro distillery. What would go better with alcohol than fireworks? I mean, jeez.
Next door.
To me, that sounds like a perfect combination.
Do you know, Keith?
I'm not sure, sorry.
Okay. That's okay, yeah.
So, can I ask Ben, Heather, under, under twenty-two oh-three, again, table of uses? The Risinger report recommended removing restaurant counter service. We have that listed as a conditional use.
Yep.
Okay.
And I, I believe they indicated that would be in alignment with the two thousand and fifteen comp plan. Where did they derive their consider updating? Uh, was it, uh, it, I, I know I read through the preface they had, number of meetings with township at that time when they went through this. Uh, so it was a detailed analysis and, and after that, uh, they have these, these recommendations in red.
I don't recall specifically why they were wanting, recommending that we get rid of the counter service, um. Cause I know that, I mean, we, we definitely didn't want the drive-throughs in there.
What's the thought behind counter service? Fast food, you don't want, does that, do, don't eliminate fast food?
Now, what I thought, what happens to the waffle house? They have both tables and counter. What do you do?
I would, I mean, I would consider that a table service restaurant.
Yeah.
The waffle house, yeah. But then, what about Starbucks? You order at the counter, we don't, we don't specify, you know, coffee shops as a, as a use. If Starbucks were to come here, which they did, um, I looked at, at them as a counter service restaurant, which was conditionally permitted in the BX, in the BX district on Cryle Road. The drive-through was a whole separate conditional use. So I'm like, you could have the counter service restaurant without the drive-through, but then it goes down to, is, are we trying to eliminate fast food there? Maybe, maybe that's what we're.
It's a coffee shop.
We can get into semantics about that, right? I mean, but if you want.
Cause you're gonna get, you're starting to get into semantics now.
Yeah, but it's, it's good.
Starbucks offers more than coffee.
Yeah.
You go in there and get a sandwich, you can get, you know, pastries, you know, bagels, sandwiches, breakfast sandwiches, all, you know, I mean, there's a lot. It's not just coffee.
Right.
So.
Panero does that too.
Yeah, that's, um, that's what I said, I, I'm, I don't know that, I don't know that I'd wanna eliminate that. I think there's, it, it's, it becomes, um, I can't think of the right word, but it just becomes an issue with definitions and like you said, semantics, you know, what's, what really defines restaurant counter service versus.
Restaurant tables.
Table service, and like you said, you know, it takes, there are places that, you know, I mean, Starbucks, you can sit at Starbucks, Starbucks too. There's the table service in a Starbucks, table service in a Panera Bread, there's table service in a Dunkin' Donut. Go in there and sit down, have a coffee and a doughnut or a sandwich, right? Or you can go up to the counter, order and leave, go to the drive-through. Now, 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 if you wanted to start talking about drive-through versus counter service, I'd be willing to entertain that conversation. We, do you want, do you want, you know, do you want drive-through services in something in that area? That I would be willing to consider.
I agree, Andy, I guess, is, is there a definition or zoning resolution of a counter service?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's what I was looking to right now, yeah.
Let's look that up.
As a matter of fact, I've got a newly updated zoning resolution book. Where's definitions?
Section five.
Five?
It's definition of, um, one seventy.
One what?
It's definition one seventy.
One seventy?
One seven zero.
A retail service establishment whose principal business is the sale of foods, frozen desserts or beverages in ready to consume servings for consumption either within the restaurant building or for carryout and where customers are not served their food, frozen dessert or beverages by a restaurant employee at the same table or counter where the items are consumed. And that definition is as one five of two thousand and seven.
Seems to me there's a lot of perhaps desirable restaurants that fall under that definition that could, could locate in the capital district and be, be a nice amenity as opposed to a drive-through. That's not specifically drive-through.
Well, that, that's, see, that's my, that's my concern. And like I said, I'd be willing to entertain that conversation because I think that's a valid conversation. You know, we can have, we can, I think we can have fast food, but I think we throttle it with the elimination of drive-through service. So you want, you want, because I think drive-through, that adds a whole different dimension, you know, to, to the, to the environment and to the, to, just to the overall, um, aesthetics and traffic flow. I mean, when you got drive-through, you got, you know, you got, a lot of people would certainly rather drive through, uh, you know, to get a cup of coffee or to get a, a sandwich or something and, you know, and then that creates a traffic flow and you got cars coming in and if your, 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 your intent is something that's more community oriented, it's gonna have a lot of foot traffic, that those, that to me is not a, that's not something that, that goes well.
I think you're gonna eliminate every fast food there is.
Why can't we just say you can have your fast food restaurant, you just can't have drive-through?
They're not gonna, they're not gonna bite.
Well, then they don't bite.
Okay, so that, like I said, you're not, you're going to eliminate every fast food restaurant that there is. Well, I know depending on where that restaurant's located, if it's close to a residential area late at night and you hear those speakers screaming and yelling, that's very nerve wracking.
Well, Frank, we're talking only about the capital district, so we're only Auburn, we're only, uh, we're the capital district. So, I mean, there's not a lot of residential there.
No, not, not a lot, but.
But, but my recollection from study was traffic was a concern, circulation of traffic.
Right.
Even as it was, even the sheets as we remember, um, at that location.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, that, you know, I, I think the, um, I think from that standpoint, we look at just basically, you know, eliminating the option for, for drive-through. Because there is, there, you know, to, to Frank's point, I mean, with this, you know, with the, with the, with the drive-through service and the speakers blaring and people talking, you know, to the, in the drive-through, lighting and all the other additional things that go with the drive-through. You know, there is some intention or there is some desire for mixed use, uh, facilities in the, in the town and, and that particular area that would be, um, residential, you know. I, you know, I don't wanna say high-rise, but you know, like apartments above building, you know, above businesses down below, things like that. So you're gonna have people living in that area. And that, that drive-through again, I think would be, you know, that would certainly be intrusive for their enjoyment of their property.
So it, it would appear, I didn't study all the definitions here Heather, but it would appear we have drive-throughs, but it's not defined under restaurant in our definitions.
Is there anything in the definition specifically that specifically calls off drive-through?
I don't know.
Is there?
A definition for drive-through?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Oh, wow.
Rise, rise.
Enlighten us.
Yes, number fifty-seven.
Number fifty-seven?
Yes.
Number fifty-seven in your book, number one in your heart.
Drive-through facility, if those are doing it. Book here, any portion of a building or structure from which business is transacted or is capable of being transacted directly between the employee of the business and the customer while the customer is located within a motor vehicle during the business transaction. The term drive-through shall also include drive up, drive in, but shall not include car wash, gas station and automotive services. So, so at, since it's defined and in the capital district, restaurant counter service is a conditional use, drive-through is not even.
Is drive-through even referenced anywhere?
Even referenced in here, oh, yes it is. Accessory uses on page twenty-two point seven. But it is not, it's not a conditional use or permitted use within the capital district.
But if it's an accessory use, wouldn't that then, um, wouldn't that lend itself to, if you're a conditional, you see if you're, if you've got a condition, if you get the conditional use permit.
And it is in association with.
Right.
That's a good question.
It's not permitted in the capital district though, cause the cell is blank. So if you're looking at the table in section twenty-two oh-three and going across, you see the drive-through facility.
Right.
It's there, since the ta, the square is blank, therefore it's not allowed.
Just gonna say, Mike, Mike Lucas takes the, uh, the approach that if it's not included, it's omitted.
Yeah, and we specifically state that in our resolution.
Yeah, right, okay.
Now, it doesn't prevent someone from trying to go for a variance, yeah, I mean.
Certainly ask, they could ask for it. And this is, this, this, this is where it gets, to me, where it gets sticky. Because if we run into these situations and we've learned the hard way recently with some things, where once, once it's out of our realm and it goes to the BZA as a conditional use and they approve it,
We're stuck.
We're stuck with it. At that point now, we're just doing site plan review and we're pretty much, we're, we're very, we're very restricted as to what we can do once it, once it goes to the BZA for a conditional use. If they approve it at that point, then we're, we're, we are out of the picture. The approval is in, it's done. So I, I just, that's why, that's why I feel it's important we really take a hard look at some of these conditional uses because of that reason, because if, if it's, if it's in here.
It goes to them.
It goes to them. It's out of our hands to stop it from happening. And that's where I think the only, the only real tool we have to prevent that from happening is eliminate, eliminate the conditional use. And then that way they can't, it can't go in front of the BZA for approval. We take that out of the process.
Agreed.
So.
Cause all you need is one and then you have.
Well, I, well, it's, I mean, it's, we've, we've just, we've gone through this. And we've been, and we've, we're, we've been kinda bitten by this process.
Yeah.
Uh, so my, my, my issue is if, if it's something in the, if there's something in the conditional use list within that particular zoning district that we don't like, then I think we should get it out of there, to just remove it.
So, so to that point then, uh, that, I'm sorry, I came across that as the first one that come, come across. Is there any further discussion we have about the counter service since it's a conditional use?
I'd like to, I think we should leave it in there, that's my opinion, but I mean, that's, that's my thought.
I had it xed out.
Now, after discussion, you still think it doesn't belong?
I'm okay, I'm okay with it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So that specific use, do you think it's appropriate to leave, just for clarification, leave it in as a conditional use under the capital district, but then also would, would you assume to leave it in under the ISP D as well? I know we're kind of going, I, I'm taking the next section, but.
Asking you whether to consider both at the same time.
Oh, okay.
Is that appropriate?
Well, maybe, yeah, cause I, I, if we're gonna go use by use, then probably. Because we have to understand that they can probably choose one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't answer that right, yeah, okay.
My question was kinda.
Cause I had proposed to take it out under the ISP D based on what Risinger said, but I didn't really realize that, you know, that I was, you know, does that need to be the same under the capital district? Is there a reason to have it the same, should it be different?
Right.
So on your, the ISP D table, Heather, you have, you have removed office of professional services.
No, did I?
Xed out, you have, I have a line through it?
No.
On thirteen point two eight, page thirteen point two eight?
You have, what do you have, Mr.? On the table?
All right, the only thing I have a line through, Red, is the restaurant counter.
So let me, let me explain this table, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, so what I was recommending under thirteen point three six, okay, so under thirteen point three six, innovative site PD is a conditional use. The whole thing is a conditional use.
The whole thing.
So under that conditional use, we had originally specified permitted uses and conditionally permitted uses under a conditionally permitted use. So, right, that's what, when I was looking at it, I'm like, why are we doing that? So what I was gonna recommend to the board is if the innovative site PD is a conditionally permitted use in general, should all the uses under there be permitted? Or should they take a second step to get a, then a, a reapproval on a, a second conditionally permitted use? We could entertain the idea of if, if there was a, I, I don't know, so.
So you just remove that, just remove that column?
Should they all just be permitted under that conditionally permitted use?
Office of conditional use.
So the, the table here and the amendments, the text right above that, I, I was suggesting that, um, this would be a list of all the permitted uses. The, the precise use or type of use of land shall be specified in the plan as submitted and, submitted and approved by the township. So, and maybe we need to add another word up here, but basically what I was recommending is that under the ISP D, any use that you wanna allow there should just be permitted.
Right.
That was something that we were going to do under the changes that did not move forward back in seventeen. Although keep in mind, it was a different review process. But this would be basically you, a developer has an idea for a four, four acre tract of land. He comes to the BZA with a concept plan, I'm gonna have a restaurant here and I'm going to have, well, it's an office here, um.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, I mean, why, why?
Should we have, should we have conditional uses?
Begin with, so do you wanna have conditional and permitted uses within?
A conditional use.
A conditional use, that, to me, that's the Department of Redundancy Department.
Although we might want to, maybe I need to take a look at what are the conditions under those specific uses currently? Because if we take that out, then they wouldn't necessarily be held to whatever the specific conditions are under those uses.
Right. Well, I think what we just look at is the permitted, the table and determine if there's anything on that table that we don't like and remove it. Otherwise, if anything is on that table is, you know, is on, is on the table as far as what they might wanna put in there.
So, so, so are we saying the table of uses in the regulations twenty-two govern what's in ISP D? They don't need to repeat itself?
Right.
That's what you're saying, or just eliminate this whole table?
Right.
Um, no, I think they're.
Just eliminate the column that has conditional or permitted. Cause it's that you're already got a conditional use for the entire district. So why would you have conditional uses under a conditional use? Right?
They wouldn't necessarily mirror because under the ISP D.
There's some that I didn't like.
You've got the, you've got the option to do the residential, which we are not gonna allow under the regular capital district. So, um, a lot of it is the same. If you were to probably do side by side comparison, um, whether or not it's permitted or conditionally permitted, let's kind of, you know, um, although, let's see, hold on, under the cap, so under the capital district, um, like it, we don't allow like the dwellings. So the row house, townhouse dwellings, the, the residential above, retail, that's unique to the ISP D. Also, the, uh, yeah, community parks and neighborhood parks. Some of those that I was recommending that we add in here aren't necessarily allowed into the capital district. So there's some differences, they're not exactly the same thing.
I mean, uh, for me, this is confusing, but do you, to the general public, wouldn't an overlay make this cleaner?
It could, yeah, yeah.
So you, are you thinking the, I, to make the, uh?
ISP D.
The ISP D into an overlay? Is that true?
I'm, I, I'm asking, i- i- in, in the traditional sense of a, here's the approved underlying zoning that's capital, that's there. The overlay provides an. The overlay provides an approved zoning on top of that zoning, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an approved modification to what the base zoning is.
Right.
We approve this with residential component. It's an overlay. So, help me again, why was it done this way? You said it made it, would make it?
You know, bringing back, my recollection is not 100% because this is actually right when I joined the township. This was in early 2015, and we were working with Mark Majeski had written the text basically that we have in place right now under the ISPD. That was his recommendation to the trustees at the time, to put it in as a conditional use. Is one of the options under the Ohio Revised Code for Townships as far as how we can approve plan developments.
And in addition, I recall the map, the ISPD does not occupy the entire capital district. A conditional use permitted for ISPD could be anywhere in the capital district? Or it was, I thought it was mapped, Reisenger had a?
The way it's set up now, it can be anywhere with, on any property that's zoned capital district.
It's anywhere, okay, sorry.
Just on the capital district.
And it has to have so many acres.
Four.
Minimum four acres.
Four acres.
Four acres, so.
What do I do with my zoning map? So if you look at what parcels that really would include, so if you're looking at Auburn Road where the roundabout is, Auburn and Capitol, the southwest
Yes.
corner there, that parcel is a seven-acre parcel that the township actually owns, that Jed and the trustees have been working to try to, you know, find a developer. And then the parcel to the south of that, I believe is about a five-acre parcel. And then staying on that same side of the street, sorry, that five-acre parcel is owned by Concord Real Estate Investment that owns the majority of the industrial land back on Discovery as well. The parcel on the northwest corner of the roundabout, that is another about seven acres. It's owned by Lake Health. And then across the street is the former site of the Granite site, they've cleared it out a bunch, they've been marketing it, trying to sell it to somebody. I think it's about two and a half acres, so it's not big enough to, you know, to do its own separate Innovative Site PD, but if, you know, if you're able to parcel together a bunch of these, you might be able to do something. And then behind that is the existing, kind of, it's Normandy property, or, sorry.
When you say behind that, to, behind, when you say behind?
Oh, behind where the Granite site is, I'm sorry.
To the east.
To the east, yeah, sorry. To the east, that is a, is an already developed kind of, it's got four buildings, it's a commercial site. You get a lot of, it's a commercial site with four separate buildings, 24 units, so different types of tenants come in and out of there, various commercial things going on. And then to the southeast of the roundabout, those two long rectangular parcels that front on Capitol, we know that that was the site where Sheets.
Sheets, yeah.
Sheets was on that corner that abuts 44, and then the property owner was still trying to reach out to, and try to figure out what he was gonna do on the remaining parcel. I think that would be about five, five acres left over. And then to the south of that, I mean, it's the Capra Business Center, which is already partially built out, I don't know what his plans are in his east portion of that. He had big plans to do multiple medical office buildings there, but hasn't moved forward with that yet. And then as you go south of that, there's a couple non-conforming residential lots. And then the larger, most southern capital district parcel, that is, that is actually, half of that is wetlands. And that's where Dr. Mercini is currently building her medical office building on the other part of it. So I, very expensive to develop the rest of that piece.
So, so let's take as an example,
Yeah.
the initial southwest corner controlled by the township, seven acres. Okay? And let's say there was a developer, let's assume, applied for conditional use for ISPD.
Right.
And then the property to the south goes medical, or any one of the other permitted uses in Capitol.
Right.
So it seems to me, when that happens, we're getting, I don't wanna call it spot zoning, but it seems like we're then now could marriage residential next to something we don't want. There's no transition as opposed to an overlay where you have a, yeah, obviously, it's consolidating and bringing together all of it into some master development. So maybe the intent was to create opportunities for smaller owners or smaller parcels to develop innovatively, this Innovative Site PD, but then we're gonna end up with potentially a business next to Townhome. Right, like next door. Am I correct? Under what we have now?
I guess that's possible, yeah, I mean, if a seven-acre site developed as its own standalone, and then the property to the south sold, I mean, we, right, they could move forward with just what they're allowed to do under the capital district. And I think part of that might be looking at, what are the district standards? Like the setbacks and some of the things that we have in there? And I know, we kind of discussed whether or not even under the capital district or the ISPD, that should our setbacks really be minimums? Or should they be standards? Like the setback shall be, you know, 10 feet or 20 feet? And I wonder if we took a look at some of those dimensional bulk standards that the use itself within the building wouldn't matter as much, but the form of how it's actually developed on the property would.
Yeah, I'm just asking the question, I don't mean to upset the author card here.
Yeah.
But just trying to understand.
You are.
Yeah, it's the reality of it that we, yeah.
It's just what's adopted here, we have to, we have to think forward and ahead of how, what that could and that we're gonna sit here going, oh my God, when, yeah, now we're proving this, and now we're proving this next door.
Yeah.
We're gonna sit here saying, did we have any way to mitigate that from happening?
I don't know.
I think we need more discussions about this, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. And I.
So there's a third option, of course, and it's eliminate ISPD altogether.
Well, that's one way to do it.
It's what we're discussing, right?
Well, I.
Yeah, it's a work session, correct.
That just came to my head, I didn't prepare for that. Once I started thinking about what, the way, and thank you for explaining, it's a conditional use now, four acre minimum. And the table of uses under the Capitol really just applies, because it's granted a conditional use under here, there's no need to, right?
No.
Well, if they're granted.
Cross them all out.
Well, the thought was, you come one time to the BZA and ask for your conditional use.
Right.
Or should you come to the BZA and ask for your ISPD? That is your conditional use, and under that, you present to them.
And then everything that falls underneath that is fair game.
I understand.
Unless.
Unless you find a need.
Unless we remove it. Unless we decide to remove it. From the ISPD. Then it's not fair. Then it's out. So if you don't like child or adult daycare center, we remove it. Then you don't have to worry about a child or adult daycare center going in.
But it's, but it's a conditional use in the Capitol?
Yes, but it's also, but it's allowed, if we take it, if we take it to this, where we're going with this, it's a permitted use under ISPD. Because it's basically, it's in there, it's on the list of things that you can do in the ISPD.
He's correct, right, so if you decide, if you do the ISPD route, you can only do what's listed in table, in this table under section 13.
Right, okay.
You don't follow what's under the other table 22.03.
Right. Yeah, that's why she has all, that's why she lined them all off as conditional.
Again, just bringing up that as an example, child or date, adult daycare is conditional under Capitol. You're saying, if we remove it here, then it's listed as a permitted?
Just permitted, right. And maybe I'm wrong on that, but, and, and, so, would we want, okay, so if the BZA says yes to the ISPD, this is a great idea, you've told us where everything is going to be in all your uses, okay, we've identified three conditionally permitted uses, now you have to come back and ask for conditional use permits for those? That's what I was, you know, is that what we would want applicants to do? Or would those conditionally?
Red tape.
Yeah, right, so I don't know, it's just an idea.
Whenever somebody comes to the BZA and says, I want to put in a child or adult daycare center
Okay.
in the capital district. It's a conditional use, and you approve it. Why would they have to approve it again?
They're approving it not as an ISPD, they're approving it just to develop?
They come in as an ISPD.
Oh, you're saying that.
And they say, and they gotta tell you what they're doing. I'm doing a childcare facility in the capital district as an ISP. Hey, it's approved. ISP is approved in the capital district. So do they also have to?
No, no, you're, you're, that's, you're, you might be unintentionally misstating with your point, because an ISP, an ISPD, an ISPD is not permitted, that's a conditional use in itself.
It's not permitted.
It's not, even regardless of where you're putting it, it's gotta be, it's a conditional use.
Is permitted in the capital district as a conditional use.
Conditional use, correct.
Okay.
So it has to go to the BZA to be approved.
And the BZA says, well, what are you doing? And they said, childcare.
Do they have to really instant, do they have to, do they have to state their intent at that point? They're just asking for the ISPD, because anything that's in the, under the permitted use on an ISPD is on the table. So what diff, I mean, they could say, they could pick any of these things and say, oh, we're gonna put in a microbrewery. And then you could say, okay, well, we're gonna approve that. And then they could come back and say, ah, we changed our mind, we're gonna put a daycare center. Because that's technically, it's, I don't think it matters what their intent is for the ISPD. It's, that's a conditional use, and the conditional use has a list of permitted uses within that ISPD.
So we're saying conditional within 13? 13, yeah, 1336. So we've gotta have this table.
Right.
You've got to have this table
But the, but.
To say here is a use you can do in ISPD.
But having the table and then identifying these uses as permitted or conditional is, that's, that's what we're, that's the problem. See, because if you, if you, if they, if they, if they apply for the, for the ISPD, that's a conditional use, and it's granted.
But for what?
Then.
Don't they have to tell the BZA what the hell they're doing?
No, anything that's on this list, anything that's on the list. Because if it's given as an ISPD, all these things are on the table. So if there's something on, if there's something on this list that you don't like for an ISPD,
We gotta get it out.
We gotta get it out of there.
Okay.
Because anything that's on here is something they could do.
Now I understand.
Right.
Just can I clarify though, but when they do come to the, if they do come to the BZA with an ISPD
Yeah.
application, they are going to specify what uses they plan on having.
Yeah.
So, right.
But they could change that.
They could, but.
Would they have to come back and get another conditional use?
I would hope so.
They would have to get their plan probably amended, if it changed something.
But my point is.
It's a major modification.
Yeah. Yes, we're going down that route, yes, yeah.
Touche, that's a good, hold it out, didn't you finally got to use it? No, well, see, that's my, my point is, is that, yeah, that would be a major modification, which could potentially, you know, because if they come in and they say they're gonna use it, they're gonna build a micro distillery or a microbrewery, you know, and they come to the BZA, and the BZA approves the Innovative Site, well, let's say they come up with several things, here, we're gonna put a bank and a, you know, we're gonna put a bank and a micro distillery and a, you know, a school.
So basically, what we're saying is, put the uses here, but delete the whole table.
No, no, just delete the permitted conditional component, right, get rid of that, there's no reason.
Delete that completely.
Right.
Okay.
Because you don't want to have, because if you give it to them as a conditional use,
That's it.
then they're gonna come back and say, we want to put in a school, and that's a conditional use. So we're gonna have to, so after they get the conditional use for the property, then they gotta come back and get another conditional use to put the school in. And that, to me, that seems redundant.
Okay.
To put a conditional use within a conditional use.
So what are we doing? Are we going through 1336 first?
Well, okay. So, so concurrent with, that's why Heather brought up 13. So when we talk about restaurant counter service, now, we should, that brought up the question, but now I've got, I think, the reason that 13, the table has pieces, the permitted and conditional uses crossed out, because we're just gonna list a table.
Yeah, right, table of use.
So the question is that we had, was counter service, we thought we can maintain that as a conditional use in Capitol. The question is, do we want to maintain it in the ISPD?
No.
That's the question.
No, I've got it taken out. I xed that one out, I xed it out before, so I xed it out again.
Oh, so now you've, now you've gone back to you don't like it?
No, yeah. Well, I didn't, but.
No, you didn't, and then you said you were okay with it, now you're saying you don't like it again.
No, I don't like it. Well, okay, so it's because of the premise or the design principles of an ISPD. Like, your counter service may not be appropriate in what, in ISPD, a mix of retail, service, office, entertainment, it's a mix, mixed use. Could have townhomes with above retail store, a lot of places, things like that, where they live above and work below. So.
What's, excuse me.
Yeah.
Do you know by any chance, just out of curiosity, because I know you did a lot of research on it, what's, how many acres is Pinecrest on? Over there at Beachwood? How big is it?
I don't know, off the top of my head, I have no idea.
Olive Pinecrest? Pinecrest?
Olive.
Yeah, that's, what's, what would that?
Ahead, I wanna say, somebody had mentioned at the office, 20 acres?
Yeah. Is it?
Maybe not even 20, maybe not even 20, but, I meant everything, all the way up to the.
Right. You know, you know where Pinecrest is?
Maybe it's less.
Yeah.
Right.
Goes from Morley to Hermanity.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
Pinecrest, the.
The Orange Village.
Yeah, the Orange Village there.
X use development, well.
Yes, off of, in, what is that, considered Beachwood or?
Richmond Road.
Was that Beachwood or?
Orange Village. Yeah, yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's more like 10 to 12 acres, it's not 20.
I'm just curious what that, because that, to me,
Yes.
would be, would be a model, or would be something that you would say that that would, what we, that's kind of what we would want to attract to that
Location.
to that location in the township. Is something similar with that kind of mixed use and, you know, the various things that are there. I think there's a lot of amenities within that area that would be conducive to. And that's why I was curious, how many, because I, and my point is, is that just envision.
Heather answered.
It's 58 acres, according, 58 acres according to their website.
That's 58 acres?
58.
Wow.
58-acre mixed-use district, 145-room boutique hotel, 87 luxury apartments, 400,000 square feet of retail and restaurants, and 162,000 square feet of Class A office space. 2100 parking spaces.
But I guess my point is, is that just envision four acres of the Pinecrest for conversation's sake. But I mean, my point is that envision that, and that's what, what I would think we would want to attract here, something similar. Not, you know, I didn't, I dumped.
You like, you like the concept, but yours would be a worse market.
But, and though, not a developer, but in, in principle, when you try to mix, a mixed use on four acres, it just seems, so I'm just, I'm just wondering about the rationale
Single use.
of ISPD for four acres.
Right. Maybe, maybe, maybe you expand the size. Because like you said, four acres doesn't give you a whole lot.
No. No.
And that, you're probably, you're probably narrowing it down to a single use, maybe to.
Not to create a mini, a mini Pinecrest, or a mini legacy, or a mini crockery, not to create, you need, to amass some property for mixed use, especially for parking.
Yeah, at four acres, you don't really have a whole lot of, you're probably looking at a single use.
Just a bathroom, you can say, like you say, parking and everything else.
Right.
That has to be there, encompass that.
So I said, four acres, you're probably looking at a single use.
Yeah.
Maybe multi-use, but it's.
Yeah, it's not much.
Not be a whole, it's not gonna be a lot of, it's not gonna be half this list, that's for sure, it's gonna be one or two things off this list, and that's gonna be it.
That's gonna be it, yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know, then, then you get to the argument, though, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but then you get to the argument, at four acres, then, that, to, to Hiram's comment, that does limit then, you know, how many, they would have to state their uses, and it wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to come in with fifty different uses on a four acre parcel.
Right.
Would be, would probably be one or two things, so you'd know right up, right up front, right off the rip.
Yeah.
What they were planning on putting in there.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And, I don't know, just seems to me you could have a.
An easier way.
An easier way, and, and trying to, trying to make something that's more uniform, that blends with, into the, the community's infrastructure, the way it would pan out, you want it, rather than the way it's created, four acres, somebody's here, then somebody develops a business over here, and then somebody does a residential over here, and just.
Yeah, I mean, I know, we had a lot of conversations about how, you know, even when working with Risinter, like, is there a way to acquire them to do the ISP D? No, we can't force someone to take, to do a plan development, even if we did like an overlay on that, it's my understanding that it's.
Also a conservation development.
It's, it's still an option, you know, so.
Can force them.
You still could get this piecemeal development, kind of like we're already experiencing, you know, on Cryle Road even, the, we will have plans probably in the next few months for the car wash and the ice cream store on a piece of property that's east of.
Isn't that in capital?
Yeah, it's zone capital, right, it's at the intersection of Old Cryle, Cryle, that kind of triangular shaped lot, you know, that, so that.
On the east side.
Correct, right, and then, you know, as we all know, Sheets came in and got most their approvals for that, even though the property was zone capital, and the property owner knew that he could, if he found additional tenants or developers, he could come in and do something much more town center oriented, but chose to go the single user route, although that's still in litigation.
He also stated, I don't know if you remember, but he also stated, the property owner was here, and he also clearly stated his next project was hotel.
Possibly, yeah, right, yeah.
That's kind of what he said.
So, so, I'm sorry, I did not know Sheets was.
That's, well, it's still litigation.
It's still pending.
It's still pending litigation, but, just an example of, you know, what had transpired.
You never know.
Yeah, and, and, and to that point, his, his comment was that his next plan was to come, bring a hotel over there, hotels is, is on the list.
So I think, I mean, there was a lot of debate on, even at the time, and even maybe now, like, is it, is the town center concept, you know, viable?
Right.
Or is it still, I think we, we a hundred percent agreed that in two thousand seventeen, I still agree that, I, I think there's an opportunity for it, maybe not exactly how Risinter had envisioned it, I mean, I know that they wanted us to rezone a lot more of that property to allow for it.
Right.
Further west.
Yeah, we had a lot, we had a lot of pushback.
Yeah, yeah, they really thought we needed more land.
Because that was gonna chew up a lot of that, that light industrial or whatever that's back there on cap, on, on capital.
Yeah, but I think like.
Goes back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What we can possibly achieve in the near future, though, is going back to some of the uses, like, under either option, if there's ones that we know for sure we don't want in there, we need to remove those, even if we don't decide under the ISP D to make some of those permitted versus conditional, we just keep it the way it is, and just clean up, you know, what uses are under there, if you, if we're hesitant on changing those, or how those processes happen, those can be future amendments, and we can just.
Concentrate it.
If you prefer, just looking at the uses, unless then we feel like we're making good headway on that, and you guys want to look at some of the other standards within the, within the district.
Thank you, thank you, Heather, and I guess it seems to me, we kind of had a lot of discussion without really advancing a whole lot of the table, the table, would it be appropriate for members here to review this, and will come maybe more prepared, I know I could, because I, quite frankly, I, I found the two sections so confusing, and I think I better, I have a better understanding to maybe then make some judgment about, about the permitted and conditional uses in, in the district, unless we want to continue, we have to take it, we want to.
We're gonna continue, I need five minutes.
I don't want to keep going on for too late tonight.
Yeah.
This is early.
This is early?
Oh.
Well, we've gone yet, so.
We've got hours.
Almost ten thirty or so, but.
Counselor, he's sitting over there, he's enjoying himself, he's just, I mean, he's okay with it.
He's coming. Well, I'm okay to continue, listen.
Or can we take five minutes?
Oh, yes, of course, we'll take a break for five minutes, thank you.
Thank you. One thing I do want you to remember, once we get down here to bank, financial institutions, it's permitted, you know, I have drive-throughs.
The drive-through's omitted, not permitted.
That's not permitted. It's not listed.
No, drive-throughs are not, at least drive-through.
Okay.
It's permitted.
So you want to put a bank in? But, but you know what?
You're not gonna get a bank.
Then that's, then that's okay. See, I'm okay with that, I mean, you make a decision, a business decision, you want to put your business in, and you, and you, and you, if you, if you require drive-through service and you can't have it, then you have a business decision to make, do you want to go with your business and go for the opportunity to have the foot traffic and not the drive-through, or are you gonna say, I'm not coming in? And if you say, I'm not coming in, I'm okay, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, don't come in, if you don't like that restriction, then go somewhere else, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it, I really am. Make a business decision, that's all, that's what it is. How, how much of that drive-through traffic is attributable to your business, is it ten percent of your business? So, is it that important? If it's fifty, sixty, seventy percent of your business?
Can't help your head now.
Someplace else.
I guess I'm gonna look somewhere else, that's gonna be, you know, accommodating to my drive-through. So, and I'm okay with that, because we, I don't, I don't, as, in my, I don't want that in that area, so if you.
Well, and, and I don't disagree with that.
Right.
But I'm, I'm looking at the, the availability, the good relationship with the township to have a bank, I think that would be a good institution to have in the capital district.
But how many, do we already have banks up on Cryle Road there? Already got, what, Huntington, you got.
Across the street.
You got Huntington, you got Key.
Is there a Key Bank? I don't know.
Yeah, there's a Key Bank right next to the Waffle House.
Yeah, Waffle House.
Yeah, there is.
Key Bank there, and then you got Huntington in the parking lot in front of, out in front of Lucky's.
Is there Huntington there?
Yeah, I think it's a Huntington, right, or did it change, is it different?
I don't know.
I don't know, but, but the Key Bank, interesting you brought up, because I, for me, I don't envision banks in this, in that area, just doesn't.
Well, maybe not, but you know, the, the professional services that I know, because my cardiologist is in the capital district, and that, that's a perfect one to have, right?
See, I wanted this, I wanted this to be included.
All capital.
And I wanted this to be all part of that, and we couldn't, they, these guys that owned all this wouldn't, they wouldn't go, they, they didn't, they didn't, this was a struggle to get you Steven this much, I wanted to go back all the way to Discovery, I wanted to take these parcels, this parcel, this parcel, this, these parcels, all this section right here, leave this as light industrial, heading towards, towards freeway, but I wanted to take all this and make this part of that, I thought it made better, I thought it made better sense, but they, they didn't like that at all, they, they were, they fucked that tooth in the mail.
So now, when you look at it, it is.
It's, it's reduced.
It's reduced.
It got way reduced.
And now you have four acre ISP Ds that.
It's not.
Are meaningless.
Well, and that's the problem, and I, you know, I think it's coming, I think it's coming.
A residential?
No, I think this, it's gonna get developed, you know, it's coming, it's, but, but the question is, is does it, does it, does it develop into what we wanted?
Yeah, no.
That's the issue.
Right, right.
And I, and it's coming, and Sheets was the first smack in the face.
Yeah.
Okay, are we off the record?
Yes, we are.
Yes, yes, oh, Frank's back.
Yes.
Frank's back, but that was the first kind of punch in the nose, with Sheets, because to me, that was, that just, that, that was just completely unacceptable, and, and a use for this area that just, just completely flew in the face of what we were trying to do. That's not the gateway to the, to that area, in my opinion, but.
Hey, I agree.
But we kind of had that voiced about us.
Okay.
So what we can do, what we can do is, we can, we can make changes that can come, because it's, it's gonna start, it's gonna be like, it's gonna, you know, look, it's Cryle Road, now, would you have thought seven years ago, eight years ago, the Cryle Road would look like it does today? So.
Okay, we're back on the record?
Yes.
Uh, so we left it at table, at table of uses, twenty-two, and, and looking at thirteen concurrent under ISP D.
I think it should be a homework assignment, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I, quite frankly, I.
It's a lot to digest.
There's a lot to digest right now for me.
You're absolutely right, I think it's a homework assignment.
You're, Hiram did his homework, but.
I don't just get a homework.
The, the, the discussion tonight was, was helpful to me to better understand this, put it into a better, I can, frame of mind when it consider uses. So anyway, I'd like to see us move forward with another work session, continuation of this work session, or, or the table of uses.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, what, in general.
Yes.
What's your objective, what do you find we should be trying to achieve going through, you know, in regards to these two kaputos?
Yes, so, obviously, in my tenure here, initiated the discussion with the gas station and car wash in the capital district.
Right.
And come to find that, as a zoning commission, our hands were tied, unless we took into consideration the table of uses.
Right.
And so then, probably, probably had a discussion about that, and we, we thought, well, let's review that, those table of uses, to maybe preclude some conditional uses that we're not in favor of, because the only thing we can control is that.
That's right.
Otherwise, it's a site, site plan review and approval.
Right, otherwise, it goes through BZA and it's gone.
Right, but I'm, I'm more informed, understanding the ISP D is a conditional use, and how that is, factors into the overall zoning in the capital district, and how that could be uniformly or not uniformly developed. Andy just asked, six, seven, eight years ago, did you envision Cryle Road the way it developed? No, because I didn't understand the zoning that was on Cryle Road, but I guess it didn't, it didn't matter, because it, it was to the desirability of a developer, what they did, pushing a parking lot in front, the buildings in the back, and things like that, which created, which created that design. There's an opportunity here in the capital district to maybe look at the Risinter, look at these comp plans and the vision that was in those, and could, could we influence that with changes in the table of uses? Could we influence that by considering the ISP D? So.
Sure.
To a certain extent.
I think if you look at, if we look, look at Cryle Road, are you unhappy, are you unhappy with what's on Cryle Road right now? Are you unhappy? Do you not like, is there an element of the, from, from Drug Mart heading north on Cryle Road? Are you unhappy with what's in there? Are you unhappy with the businesses we've attracted? Are you unhappy with the way that has developed over the last several years?
Just for Risinter's sake.
If you're, right, but I mean, if you're, but, but, and look at that, and just ask yourself that question, because I think that's what's gonna happen eventually across the road, you know, with, with the rest of this, as it, because it's gonna continue, because as things develop, and as parcels and outlets and properties disappear with the businesses, then the, the people that want to come in, they're gonna, it's gonna start getting pushed in that direction. So, the question is, is are you happy with what's going on in Cryl, are we happy with what we, what's developed on Cryle Road, and how that looks, and how that, the services that are there, the, the businesses that are there, do we feel that that's a benefit to that area, and do we want to see that continue across the road, or do we want to make changes about what's permitted and what's conditional now, to prevent the things that we don't, maybe we don't like with what's going on on Cryle Road, across, across the road, because that, that's, the direction is gonna go, okay, and it's just, it's the natural process.
You're right, I think the best way realistically to achieve that is get rid of all the conditional uses stuff that we have in there.
That's what I'm saying, that's why, that's why it's important to, to really seriously look at the conditional uses.
Correct, correct.
And decide, are, are these really things that we want as this continues to grow? If we don't, then we should, we need to take the action now to remove them, because if you don't, then you may end up getting them, and.
We can achieve that by taking the items out and don't put conditional uses in.
And that's our objective.
And that's our objective.
Frank, and that's it, to Andy's point.
That's right.
Yeah, but the businesses on Cryle, for me.
Yeah.
Don't fit over here. When I say fit, it's, it's a geometrics, the, the.
It's a hush, hush.
It's, it's an area that has, it, it's created to maybe facilitate a different environment than commercial.
Correct.
That's over there, it's commercial, it's, I, I view it more as a high-end location, well, similar to the examples, and we already spoke on.
Right, see.
Yeah, yes.
Right.
Yes, but what, what can we do to influence that in the zoning? Look at that.
The point, the point I'm making is that, and Heather, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is there anything over on Cryle Road that we have that couldn't be over across the street? Technically.
Um.
Are there things that are on Cryle Road now that we could not?
Right now, like eighty-four lumber would.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't consider that even part of the conversation, but I mean, anything, say, let's say Concord, say, let's just go, cut it at Concord Motorsports, and Cryle Road Tru Hardware, okay, and go north, is there anything that's in, in there from all the way, from there all the way to Auburn Road, you know, that, that's, that couldn't go across the street, based on the table of contents that we have, the permitted and.
The permitted uses, yes.
The permitted, or conditional uses that are in, on the list. The permitted or conditional uses that are on the list. I'm not, I, my guess would be no.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not for sure, but I, I think everything that's on Cryle could technically go in there.
Yeah, so there you go.
Yeah. And that's why it's like what Rich said, it's more the geometry of, of how it's laid out. Like Cryle Road, it's definitely auto-oriented. You have to drive your car there, although we do see runners and bikers and walkers more frequently now. I do people walking, because we've got more convenience type services over there.
Right.
But the idea for the town center, obviously, we know people are going to drive there, but we hope that they would park and then walk throughout the community and, and experience, you know, what, what there is to offer there, so...
And that was always supposed to be the objective. Township center.
Yeah.
Where that can be done.
Yeah.
Where people can now only be able to live in that area themselves but utilize the services that they would need, but still be able to walk to the area that we were talking about, a big lake possibly there, where people can go and
Right.
walk around there, have a, you know, walking path to go around, and maybe even be able to picnic there, or put, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, I, if, if you go back historically to the, to the reason behind this whole thing was that we don't have a town square. We don't have a chart, and we don't have a downtown chart.
Right.
Okay? We don't, we don't have that. There is no, there is no downtown Concord, so to speak. Okay, right? I mean, there isn't anything.
Right.
It's really kind of just helter-skelter. So the kind, the thought process behind doing this whole thing was that we would create
Right.
a town Concord downtown, okay, that we don't have now. And so that was the idea, and that's how we got where we are today, so...